Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the zoning and planning board meeting. Let's ask everyone to rise and sit at the please side.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. Can I vote for you? Okay. Pardon our brief delay, we're just having some technical difficulties.
We have a new recording system.
Can we vote for these two? Here.
Dickinson.
Here.
Busham.
Here.
Kaczowski.
Here.
Forington.
Here.
Ockley.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Calavis.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
Beatrice Zabeson.
(laughing)
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, June. A public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meeting Act has been given by the clerk in the following matter posted on the bulletin board in the borough clerk's office emailed to the retrospective and the courier post. The first order of business is to have approval of the minutes of the scheduled tenth meetings. Any of the questions on those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made by Sis.
Sir.
Second, and by Mr. Ockley of Ballin' Favor.
Ballin' Favor.
Right, okay. (inaudible) all right. Joey Brooks. Okay, as we tried to explain to you briefly before the meetings, Brooks, there are two things missing from your application at this point in time. Solicitor Ryan and Brian Hall, I think, are going to try to, you know, get together with you. We have to give them plans and things before we can hear this, so it's kind of, right now it's going to be deemed incomplete. You will be able to come back in if you are ready on the June 12th meeting without pre-noticing. We did receive the notice as being hand-delivered to all the people that haven't noticed. But we will need to get all of your plans, uh, sealed and, uh, just for all, and Mr. Ryan will have to do a few letters and get them to us. Brian, we're looking at two weeks from today, correct?
Yes.
We need, we need everything in the hands of the solicitor, the planning board, and Brian Hall within two weeks from today for you to be heard on June 12th.
Two weeks from today, okay.
Okay, so it's pretty easy. We meet on the second Wednesday of every month, so this is the second Wednesday. Just make sure you have your stuff, you know, couriered or hand-delivered, and June can help you out with where, where their offices are and things.
Okay.
Anything else to add, Mr. Ryan?
No, absolutely.
So we don't have to go back through re-notification again, we already did, and re-identify?
I will say, if there's anyone here to speak on this application that was noticed, that was going to be heard this evening, consider this your notice that it is going to be heard on June 12th, you will not be re-noticed. Okay, so if anyone was here to object or to have a new say over this application, it's application only. Consider it, consider this your notice, it'll be heard on June 12th. Okay, if you have any questions, you hold on.
For the technical aspect, what is going to want to say?
Make sure you sign the application.
Oh, fine.
It was, it was signed at the rise of that.
Oh, great, okay.
Yeah, and the ferry approach notification was also due today.
Great. We'll see you next month, hopefully, okay?
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, well. All right, next we have Damian Del Duca for Med Express. Got something to come up.
Are you here for this application, sir? I was going to say you might go. My name is Damian Del Duca. I'm an attorney with the firm of Del Duca Lewis, and I represent the applicant tonight, Runnymede Equities LLC. Runnymede, Runnymede Equities owns the former La Plante Chrysler site, and we're here tonight to present an application for a new tenant at the corner, Med Express. And Med Express is an urgent care provider out of Morgantown, West Virginia, and they have several stores in South Jersey, but they're relatively new to this area, and this use is relative to what we're all used to, a newer use, so we're very excited to bring them to Runnymede tonight for approval. A little bit of history, my client and I appeared before this board in 2011, specifically in June, and we obtained approval for this site, which, as all of you know, is located in the corner of the Black Horse Pike and Eastham Road. The Pike City State Highway, and Eastham, of course, is a county road. And in June of 2011, you granted preliminary approval, site plan approval, for a two-phase development. The first phase was a retail building, almost 12,000 square feet, where Advance Auto is today, and Fremont, we have some other tenant coming in. And you also approved in Phase Two, a bank, and I'm referring to a plan, site plan prepared by Taylor Wiseman and Taylor Engineers dated April 7th, 2011, which I'll mark as A1, and that's the current approved plan that you approved preliminarily back in June of 2011. And then we came back in December of 2011 and obtained final approval, but only for Phase One, which again was a retail building, Phase Two being the bank. Subsequent to that time, my clients completed the purchase of the property, constructed the site improvements, constructed the Advance Auto, what I call the Advance Auto building, the retail building, that was Phase One, constructed many of the site improvements on Phase Two, so that customer could get out to Eastham Road and in preparation for having a new tenant at that location. We never obtained final site plan approval for Phase Two, or the bank lot, because we didn't know which bank it was going to be, so we didn't have a building to show you, we didn't have exact layout for the building, drive-through locations, things like that, so that's why this board only granted preliminary approval. Well, as it turns out, we didn't get the bank tenant. Instead, we bettered into a lease with Med Express to be at this corner location, so we're back for you tonight for amended preliminary major site plan approval for the corner lot, which is Lot 10.01, which was referred to as Phase Two in prior approval. We're also here for final approval for Med Express, so it's amended preliminary and final approval for the Med Express on Lot 10.01. And I'll present testimony from our engineer, Joe Mancini, who'll talk about the plan in more detail, but generally, the plan is the same, it's just a different building. The Med Express is a slightly larger building, although there are no drive-through lanes, obviously, to a Med Express, whereas there were for a bank. So generally, the same plan, obviously, there are some changes, and we'll highlight those for you. So we need site plan approval, preliminary and final. We've also applied for several variances, at least two. One is for a new sign, freestanding sign, to be erected roughly here, the Eastham Road driveway on the west side of the Eastham Road driveway, away from the Black Horse Pike. And that sign would be the same sign that currently exists out on Black Horse Pike. That was approved by this board previously. This proposed freestanding sign would be the only freestanding sign on the corner lot, and it would be a freestanding sign that would advertise all four tenants, Med Express, Advance, and the other two tenants in the retail building. Your ordinance is not clear on that. We applied for a variance because you certainly can interpret your ordinance to say that we're not allowed to have that sign, because your, your ordinance doesn't expressly permit freestanding signs, even though they're common in use of these, of this type. So we've asked for a variance for that, in case we need it. Back in 2011, we obtained several variances. One of them is a variance for impervious coverage. This zone, a commercial zone permits, allows 50% impervious coverage. We got a variance in 2011 from you for coverage of 83.2% on this lot, and we are revising that request to ask for coverage up to 84.9%, which is a difference of about 500 square feet, which is largely the result of the change in the building. The building is over 1,000 square feet larger than the bank, but we only are adding 500 square feet impervious because of other changes that we've made in the plan to try to reduce the amount of impervious. But nonetheless, although that variance was granted before, the percentages are changing a little bit, so we're asking for a variance there. The use is permitted. I know we appeared before you informally in January, or believe that's four months ago, but we were here and there was a question as to the use, so we applied for a zoning permit from your zoning official, and he did issue a zoning permit confirming that the use is permitted use. It's an unusual use. Your ordinance is older, so you didn't think about urgent care providers when you prepared your ordinance, so we have confirmation from him that he agrees with us that it's a permitted use, so that is not an issue. Use is a permitted use. We've also received Mr. Hall's review letter dated May 6th, 2013, and I know we asked some questions, which we'll provide answers to in our testimony. We really have no issues with the conditions and the comments in his letter that we need to clarify, and we'll do that during our testimony. So unless anyone has any questions for me, I'd like to introduce our witnesses, provide some brief testimony from two witnesses, and of course, answer any questions that you have.
Just one, Damian, how long is the lease for?
Uh, that's not a question I'm normally asked, and I didn't prepare the lease, so I should know the answer. I believe it's a ten-year lease. Jason, you would probably know. Ten-year lease with options to renew.
Okay, thank you.
We hope that they're here for at least 20 years.
Damian, you want to bring your witnesses up?
Sure.
Just have them stand up and raise their right hands.
First one is Jason Bundah, who is the real estate project manager from Med Express, and then our engineer, Joe Mancini, Taylor Wiseman and Taylor.
Okay, gentlemen, if you raise your right hand, you solemnly swear affirm that testimony you're about to give this morning tonight is proof for an accurate question of knowledge.
I do? Yeah. Jason, why don't you, why don't you go first? I also have with me Ken Lowther and Dan Silvestri, who are, who the owners of the property. I do not expect them to testify, but they are here tonight, and if they have to answer any questions, we can swear them at that time. Jason, can you tell us what your title and job responsibilities are with Med Express?
Sure, I'm a real estate project manager with Med Express, and my main responsibility is site selection. I've traveled in, in situations similar to this.
Were you involved in the selection of this site?
I was, yeah.
Yeah.
A lot of us definitely know who Med Express is. Can you give us just a, just a reader's digest summary, if you will, of who Med Express is, does the board get some idea?
Sure. Rapidly held company, founded in 2001 in Morgantown, West Virginia, by a group of ER physicians who felt that people who did not have emergency episodes such as heart attacks, traumatic experiences like car accidents, they shouldn't have to wait in the ER for four or five hours to be treated. We were looking for, for that niche. We don't, we don't treat those types of people. We're looking for cuts, scrapes, asthma attacks, bronchitis, things of that nature.
And how many locations do you have currently?
As of today, we have 109 locations.
How many in South Jersey?
We have three in South Jersey, Willing Road, West Stepford, and Sinemans.
And will this location be a typical Med Express like other ones that you have in South Jersey?
Yes, we, we try to keep them all absolutely exactly the same.
And the same in terms of how they operate and the size, generally speaking?
Generally, yes. We, we try to keep them the same size. We have a layout for, for the, the customer and patients for such.
And, so if I have, if I'm not feeling well, I don't know what's wrong, and I'm feeling well, I can walk right in and get an appointment?
Yeah, no, no appointments necessary. You can walk in anytime, nine to nine, seven days a week.
And, uh, what kind of services do you not provide at this location?
Uh, we will not provide, um, if, if, we will not provide services for very traumatic experiences, like you said, gunshot wounds, car accidents, things of that nature. We stow up, leave you need to go to the emergency room.
Were you performing surgical procedures yet?
No, just minor, very minor procedures, like stitching, if you come in with a cut, we'll stitch you up, things of that nature. We do have an X-ray, form X-rays, send you on your way to the appropriate parties, and then you kid you, or if you're, it's necessary, we'll send you along to a cardiologist or the hospital.
Do you provide any long-term addiction counseling or medical services?
No, we don't do anything like that.
No drug clinic, not a drug clinic of any kind, right?
No, the only thing we do is, um, you know, physicals, if you're a new hire, and they require a drug screening, I'm in a physical with one of us.
Is it correct to state that generally you don't treat life-threatening conditions?
That is correct.
And someone comes in with a life-threatening condition, whatever it may be, will you immediately recommend to them that they go to the hospital or help make arrangements for them to go to the hospital?
Yes, that's what we do. We stabilize as best we can and, and make arrangements to get them to a proper place.
Now, this location here in Runnymede is obviously next to a retail center, it's in a commercial zone, it's near other retail-type uses, correct?
Thank you.
Is that a typical location that Med Express wants to be in?
Absolutely.
And why?
We are looking at the convenience factor for our patients, our customers. We want to be where you go day-to-day, and, um, so we, we are a medical use and a retail concept.
Will Med Express obtain all licensing that's required by law for this location?
Yes.
And will it comply with all local ordinances, including Runnymede ordinance regarding the use and disposal of knives, scalpels, and needles?
Absolutely.
What is the typical peak hour, busiest time for Med Express?
Uh, we have a peak hour from nine to 10, right when we open, and then after hours, five to nine tends to be our busiest time there.
And are you busier on weekdays or the weekend?
Uh, weekends.
Okay. Um, is it safe to say?
With Monday being the busiest day.
Really? Do you know why that is?
Uh, people getting back into the swing of things and don't want to, uh, don't want to go for treatment on their Saturday or Sunday.
Don't want to miss work on a Sunday.
(laughing)
Can you tell us what you expect to be the maximum number of employees working on the site at any one time? Once you're up and running and established?
Yeah, we'll start with fewer, but we, we'd be about that.
And how many patients would you expect to be in your building at any one time in the, in the absolute peak hour during, say, flu season, in the middle of winter, once you're established at this location?
The absolute peak, uh, probably about third.
And what would the typical peak be? Not, not the absolute max?
Typical 10.
10, 10 patients at one time?
Yeah, 10 to 15.
Uh, can you give the board an idea of what kind of staff you'll have at this location?
Sure, we'll have one physician to start with, a couple of registered nurses, run-office assistants, a manager, that's how we'll begin. As patient load picks up, we'll add registered nurses or other care nurses in general.
Um, have you reviewed the plan specifically as to the number of parking spaces provided?
Yes.
And are you satisfied that we are providing you with a sufficient number of parking to meet your peak demand?
I am.
Um, how, uh, how will we handle trash at this location? Not medical waste, but regular trash?
Uh, we will, uh, we'll use two 50-gallon garbage cans for all the waste.
So we were not proposing a trash and closing of the dump?
We don't, we don't require that.
And how do you handle medical waste disposal?
That's internal, we have the Redback service inside the plant.
Okay. Um, can you give us an idea of how often that type of waste is, is taken from the site?
Actually, no, I can't. I believe it's every two weeks.
Okay. Let's talk about delivers. What kind of trucks may deliver to your site? Generally speaking, how often do you expect that to occur?
Uh, the standard FedEx, UPS trucks, they normally come into the front door and three to five a week.
So do you have any tractor-trailer delivers?
Absolutely not.
No semis, anyone like that?
No, just restocking medical supplies.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for Mr. Bundah. I don't know if the board has any additional questions.
Um, one question, I'll bet you know, people, do they take all kind of insurance plans?
Yes.
I, I, you know.
Most, most insurance plans, we work that out with.
Okay, because something was said about it, you know, people going to answer that.
Right.
Okay.
You're right, I didn't think of that really from a zoning and planning standpoint, but that's another important question.
That's very big with people.
Yeah, we have arrangements with most insurance plans, I can't tell you every single one, but, yes.
Insurance plan.
Absolutely.
Will you be dispensing drugs or writing prescriptions?
No, not at this location.
What are the hours of operation?
Nine to nine, seven days a week.
Medicare assignment with the COVID?
Working on that in the state of New Jersey right now.
It's not available, president?
Uh, not present, but we're hoping it will be.
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mancini. Uh, Mr. Mancini, why don't we begin with a brief review of your professional qualifications?
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional in my area and planning in New Jersey. Been with Taylor Wiseman and Taylor for approximately 13 years, testified before numerous plannings and awards in the tree of Jersey. Work on the many site plan subdivisions, and I personally reviewed this plan and imperative myself.
Okay, you have personal knowledge of the existing conditions at this location?
I do.
We asked if we're accept Mr. Mancini as an expert professional in New Jersey?
Yeah, we asked him to be, be accepted.
Thank you. Um, was your office also the engineer, project engineer for the prior approval?
We were.
I'm going to mark as A2 the, um, color-rendered site plan that your office prepared, correct?
Correct.
And this is dated today, May 8th, 2013. Is this site plan that I marked as A2 the same site plan that we submitted with our application?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just as colored, right?
Correct. Yeah, we just added color and I see if you can sense a little bit of sight.
Okay. Um, can you begin by highlighting for the board the primary changes to the plan compared to the previously approved plan that I marked as A1?
Certainly. There are only a few changes. The access points obviously have not changed, the curb cuts have changed, we have the two on Black Horse Pike, one on Eastham. Nothing is changing on the retail portion at all. Lot 10.01, which is a subject property, much of the improvements that we've constructed around the pad site, as I'm sure you've noticed, uh, so the, the changes really consist of, the building size has changed from the previously approved bank. Obviously, we eliminated the drive-throughs, and we reconfigured to ask additional parking for this use, you know, around the pad site.
Uh, can you give the board an overview, even though this plan, other than the changes you just highlighted, was already approved, can you just give the board an overview of the proposed site plan for this corner lot, Lot 10.01?
Certainly, yeah, we, again, we have the access, uh, right out only to Eastham and, and, uh, full access in from Eastham. We have a shared access here, um, lot line is between the access from the retail and the proposed Med Express, that's a right-in only, and, uh, we have full access further, further north on the retail portion. We have two-way circulation around the front with parking, uh, we have one-way circulation in the back of the Med Express, obviously parking in the front, a handicap parking, parking on the side of the building. As Damian mentioned, we have a proposed Hyland sign at the, at the Eastham road entrance here, and a previously approved line that's signed with the Volcoons of Runnymede, that was approved with the bank use as well.
And have we submitted building elevations that show generally with this building?
Yes, absolutely have.
Okay. Are we proposing any change to Phase One, which is also known as Lot 10?
No, no change at all.
And that's constructed, correct?
Yes, it is.
Did you hear my summary of the two variances that we requested?
I, I, I did.
All right, let's start with the impervious coverage variance. My understanding is that 50% is permitted, and we propose 84.9%, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we previously obtained approval for 83.2% impervious coverage?
That's correct.
Uh, can you briefly explain why we need more impervious coverage, how, and how much we need?
Certainly, I, I think you hit the nail on the head. We previously had roughly a 4,000 square foot that the bank approved, we now have a 5,100 square foot, uh, building here for Med Express, and that's the primary generator of new impervious. We did, uh, make some modifications to minimize that increase, and so we're increasing about 1.7% for 500 square feet. Uh, we may be able to make another small reduction there based on Mr. Hall's comment, and we may be able to ask to get one of the islands and then just shave off a little bit more, but the, the larger buildings are really recent there.
Is it realistic to expect that this site at this location in this zone could be developed with 50% impervious?
It really isn't, and I think we provide testimony in support of that variance initial, the 50%, that doesn't really allow you to provide that parking and circulation and buildings that are needed to develop this site properly.
Will the slightly additional impervious coverage create any drainage problems or any other difficulties with the operation and use of this site?
No, I believe that the drainage will still function, uh, fine, as we previously testified, and we're still well below what the former Chrysler building had at, at coverage of roughly 95%. So we prepared drainage calculations to show that partially reducing the runoff from the site for the dive storms, and that's still accurate even with this slight increase.
Okay. Let's talk about the sign variance. You told us where the sign's going to be, and is that the Eastham Road drawbridge, correct?
Correct.
And on the western side?
That's correct.
It's going to be exactly the same in terms of size, height, and shape as the Hyland sign that was approved on Lot 10 in 2011?
That's correct, a 20-foot-high, uh, 80-square-foot sign.
And will this sign help improve identification of the tenants and therefore assist in traffic safety?
Absolutely, I think it's necessary from a traffic safety standpoint to identify this, uh, access to motorists on Eastham Road, and it could also, uh, is important because the new building is pushed back a little further and densely blocked, the retail buildings, I think we need to identify those uses to these motorists and, uh, help prevent, promote good circulation on the roadways and inside the site.
So if I was coming from the west and I wanted to go to Advance Auto and I didn't know where exactly it was, and I, and I missed that drop. So if I was coming to the west and I wanted to go to Advanced Auto and I didn't know where exactly it was, and I, and I missed that drawdown on Eastham, how would I get to Advanced Auto?
Well, you'd have to make a left on, onto Black Horse Pike and then make a left across traffic, uh, at the northern entrance, um, over here.
Um, in your opinion, are there any detriments associated with bringing that variance?
No, I don't see any substantial detriment. I've, uh, I know impairment through the intent purposes and, uh, as only one is-
Is that type of sign consistent with this type of development?
Absolutely. I think it's consistent with, uh, obviously the sign we previously approved and consistent with this type of development. And also not incongruent with other signs on the Black Horse Pike.
Uh, or do we require any other new variances that you're aware of?
Uh, no, no other new variances that I'm aware of. Uh, obviously, I see previously approved variances, uh, that are either the same or diminished from those previously approved.
The front door setback, uh, what was the front door setback of the back when it was approved?
Uh, the setback of the bank to Black Horse Pike was fifty-six feet. Uh, and we did require variance for that, uh, where eighty-seven feet was required.
So we were thirty-one feet short previously.
Correct.
And what is the proposed setback for the Med Express?
Uh, the proposed setback for the Med Express, uh, Mr. Hall, in his letter, they actually incorrectly identified that. So the, so the front yard is eighty-three point six as depicted in the plan, um, and that's to the, the bump out on the, the entrance of the site. The plan identifies that as eighty-four point nine, but again, eighty-three point six is, is the correct number. Although it's still much more than what was previously approved.
Eighty-four point nine, I know was the percentage for impervious. Was that also listed as the front door setback?
It was, it was down.
Okay.
Is that from my view, Red Navy? This says eighty-four nine?
Correct. That's how we identified on the plan, but again, it-
Oh, it's eighty-three?
Eighty-three point six. And, and the reason for that is because at the corner of the building where the front entrance is, there's a little tower feature or a bump out, correct?
That's right.
Which is just a slightly closer to Black Horse Pike.
Exactly.
So it's still not eighty-seven feet, but it's approximately twenty-five or so feet further back from the road than what was previously approved as a back.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, let's move to some comments on Mr. Hall's review letter.
Damien, Damien, excuse me. Um, we have the record reflected, uh, Mr. Light has, uh, brought the meeting center.
Okay.
And Damien, can I just ask you one thing? If we, if this is passed and I, the objective we set forth, uh, uh, amended variance was granted, even though you had more before to eighty-three point six?
I, I have no objection. I don't think, uh, another variance is required because we're, we're decreasing the non-conformity, but I have no objection.
But you, you don't know, if, if, so at least any resolutions consistent with your plan?
It would probably be a good idea to have a piece of paper that approved that number.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. Um, and, and as I said, we really have no issue with Mr. Hall's letter. He did ask a question about, uh, what I call a man door or passage door on, on the right side or north side of the building. Are we proposing any door in the back of it?
No, there's no doors according to our architectural footprint. There's no doors in the back of the building.
So is it correct that the only door is the main entrance at the front left corner and also a, a man door on the right or north side?
That's right.
Uh, and he asked about providing, uh, some level space there. Uh, can you talk about the changes that we proposed to that man door area?
Certainly. Uh, we already have a plan that takes a concrete island out for access to that door. Um, we don't have sufficient space between the curb and the side of the building to provide a sidewalk there, which would be ideal. But, uh, we don't believe it's necessary. This is not gonna be a main access. It's gonna be an emergency access that's included in the only. Uh, but we, we do intend to revise the plan to, uh, allow that site, uh, allow that door to be accessible. Uh, so we may have some minor modifications to bring in and incorporate, uh, Mr. Hall's comments, uh, about providing a landing area there in, in, in the process of doing that.
So our revised plan that will submit for compliance with any conditions and any approval that the board may grant will show those changes?
That's correct.
Do you have any other comments or clarification that you think are necessary to Mr. Hall's review letter?
Uh, no, it was, uh, we're, we're in agreement with the county's letter and, uh, we certainly comply.
Damien, the, on, if Brian's review letter requested variances, the, the parking setback variance, twenty feet required, five feet proposed, that was already granted?
It was already granted. It's not changing.
Okay.
Also, the landscape buffer width, twenty feet required, seven feet proposed. That's the curb along the west side of Eastham, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
And that curb location is changing, so that variance is changing.
And there was another variance that, uh, Brian had in here to allow an eighteen foot square foot sign atop a buffalo monument sign?
That was already approved.
Oh, okay. So that's very good. So just, just straight ahead.
Right.
Going a little bit south of the minus.
That's all right.
On, on previous renderings and with previous, with other tenants, there was a tender proposal, a welcome to run a beat sign.
That, that's still there. That's still proposed.
But that's still part of the original approval. I had it, it was, it was, it was agreed upon that they would do it as part of the base too.
Well, my list still making sure. I also sent your plan over to Chief Verden. Uh, he's our fire, fire, fire department marshal. Uh, he had the following comment, uh, he is gonna pass on to you, that I have reviewed all plans submitted to me currently. The only items that are of insurance would be no parking sign in improper areas within the entire complex to allow occupancy vehicles. I'm sure they will build a construction plan when submitted.
That's acceptable. Sure.
Do you propose any grant level directional signs? Someone enters over the bottom board? That, that your own vehicle can be directed at grant level, how to get around to Med Express?
Joe, are we proposing any? Well, to the extent that there are directional signs on Lot Ten, we're not proposing any changes. There won't be any directional signs on that lot that say Med Express that way. Uh, so, but are we proposing any directional signs of any type on Lot Ten point oh one?
Well, you're gonna have a sign on your building.
Yeah, we're not proposing them. I just wanted to make sure we weren't. So, so the answer to the question is no.
Is there, is there a side triangle problem there? Something I think we're over?
Also, in conjunction with the area where the monument sign is gonna be, I don't know whether you've visited that lately, not even lately, probably for about two years. The right side bench in that area has this crack all the way through. It's a concrete, there's, there's two concrete benches on your, on your plane. You'll see them. Uh, the one concrete bench needs to be repaired or removed. I mean, it looks very nice. I mean, it, it did that, they redid the corner, which in the plane, redid the corner. They put those benches in and it's kinda nice, but the, the one bench is in need of, of repair.
Okay.
For someone falls into trouble. And the list that I had, uh, I had been talking to, uh, burning work, who was also with our fire department, uh, knock boxes? Do you have a, uh, a problem putting a knock box in? What, what they do is they, is-
The fire.
Okay. That just assists the fire department in getting in in case you have emergency, if the tenant isn't available, it's eleven o'clock at night, your building is on fire. They have access to your building without breaking down windows and all that happy stuff. And we're trying to get that upon to, uh, most of the commercial properties in town, so they get a little more easy for the fire department to access those buildings in case of emergency.
Damien, have you consolidated the lots here? I see it's proposed ten in the-
No, there actually were, uh, they were subdivided. So originally, there were six or seven lots that comprised the Chrysler dealership. Uh, and we consolidated those and then subdivided them. This board granted minor subdivision approval, which I neglected to mention before, sorry. Uh, but at the same time, we got preliminary, we got minor subdivision. So now it's two lots. Lot Ten where the advances, Lot Ten point oh one where the Med Express will be. All right, that's all finished.
Most of any questions?
This has been a work in progress.
It sure has.
I have a question. Uh, do we have any idea what the, like, the average rate of patient turnover is?
Uh, that would be a question for Mr. Bunda. I don't, I don't-
Time, timeframe?
Why don't you go up to the mic and pose a question?
Yeah, on a typical day. How many patients on average?
Uh, on average, our typical locations will see sixty-five to eighty patients a day. Those patients are normally turnover in under an hour.
Was there some previous testimony about doing the, the overtaking physicals, et cetera?
Yes. Yeah.
And that's part of your purpose?
Yeah, we can, you two, physicals.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Brian, how, how did you, uh, pick out your list?
Uh, they did pretty good. Uh, I do have a couple of extra notes, so, um, Jason had, uh, testified that there'd be two rollout containers. I just wonder where they'd be stored?
Uh, my understanding, Mr. Mancini, if this is correct, if I'm wrong, is that we'll put a, a small enclosure for two trash cans back by the transformer behind Med Express. And we'll obviously show the details of that on our revised plan.
Correct. Being that such a small area, we already have the final test, uh, as the board here. Uh, also, um, Mr. Mancini had indicated that the drive aisle behind the Med Express building is gonna be a one-way drive aisle?
He did, um, he did, uh, and, and we, we proposed to strike it so that it says one-way. And so we're, at this point, we're agreeing with that recommendation.
You have a statement back there?
Yeah, the only, maybe just add a do not enter sign. That, that's all I would look for. I don't think it'll be a very, it will be a commonly traveled area for people to make that move. And, uh, can you go over the facade signage?
Yes, I can. Uh, we submitted building elevations that show a facade sign on the east and south elevations. And hopefully all board members have that. Uh, if you'll give me a second, I'll pull up my copy. Uh, we, when we filed the application, we were in a hurry to get it in to make the screening. And by the way, we appreciate squeezing us in on relatively short notice. Uh, I didn't have building elevations when I filed that application. I filed them the next day. So it's possible that that didn't make it to your package. And it didn't, okay. So while I mark this as A3, and I'll hand out copies after copies. Specifically, A3 is three sheets of plan. The first plan, uh- Uh, so this exhibit, A3, has three sheets. The first sheet is the floor plan. Uh, which obviously gives the interior layout of the, of the building. The second and third pages, I'm just gonna hold up, I don't have a copy mounted. Uh, are building elevations of all four sides of the building. And specifically, page two of this exhibit, which is marked sheet A3 in the lower right-hand corner, shows the facade signs that are proposed. And may I ask Mr. Bunda to come up here for a second? Uh, the, the front elevation, or we'll all call it Black Horse Pike elevation, is at the bottom of that page. And that is the Med Express sign that's proposed on the facade of the building. Unfortunately, the elevation doesn't have the dimensions of that, but I've confirmed with, uh, Mr. Bunda that the dimensions are, well, the, the total square footage is eighty-seven square feet. And the letter height of the NP is forty-two inches. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is the letter height of the, the words Med Express on that sign?
Twenty-five point six inches.
Okay, so a total square footage of eighty-seven square feet. And then the letter heights, as we just mentioned, I look at your ordinance and it permits, uh, facade signs up to twenty percent of the wall area, which would be, you know, almost four hundred square feet by my very rough calculation, done by a lawyer, but, uh, and most importantly, we're, we're significantly below your limit. And we will comply with your ordinance limitation on the size of the facade sign. Uh, Jason, on the side elevation, on the Eastham Road elevation, is that the same sign?
Yes.
Same size?
Same size.
Okay.
Does that facade sign light up, Jason?
Yes, it does.
Is it internally illuminated?
Yes.
Also, how about the urgent care signs above the door entrances?
Yeah, that, that would light up.
Okay. Um, I'm not concerned with the, the twenty percent at all. It's the right of the large facade. I just wanna call out that they're, they're showing two signs pointing to the facade. The ordinance doesn't have a number requirement, so, uh, there's no variances needed, but I just wanted to let, let everybody know that there are two signs on that facade.
Meaning urgent care is a second sign?
Correct.
I know your ordinance talks about informational signs as well. We think it's, uh, many sets of variances require, but we think it's a good idea, especially if people aren't really used to what Med Express is.
And then, um, just in the elevation, there's a cross in the background. I'm assuming that's internal in the tower?
It is not actually, it's on the tower.
What materials is that?
I don't know. That is not.
If you'd like to.
We consider that an architectural element related to use.
Obviously, it was colored.
Yeah. That's the best I have. I'm sorry.
My grand would, um- Damien, do you consider that a sign still over the point of control? I'm fine considering that as architectural element as well, although it's an architectural of, of this use.
I agree.
You have also any questions?
At this point in time, on Damien, are you ready to reopen the public?
Sure.
Okay. At this point in time, if there's anyone here wishing to speak on this application, this application only, please approach the microphone and be sworn in and heard.
Thank you, everyone. Lady Chair, I, there would be cause of the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion made in second and both the public portion will be.
Okay, this is how we come to support tonight on an amended, uh, site plan and a request of amended preliminary approval and final approval, uh, for the track. The two variants that I believe are in question tonight is a request, uh, to allow impervious coverage of eighty-four point nine feet. On our ordinance, it says no more than fifty percent, but the board was pointed down, uh, that under the formal approval, the applicant was granted impervious coverage of eighty-three point six, six, uh, percent. So there really requests the minimus of nature and the board should consider approving that. The, the, they are also requesting a, really from our ordinance regarding freestanding signs in the parking lot in order to per, uh, provide an eighty-foot square foot sign, twenty feet high, freestanding or a pileup, which they testified would advertise the, uh, the four tenants that will be at the location. Uh, for administratively, we're just going to recite another variance, uh, front yard where, uh, eighty-seven feet is required. And they're proposing eighty-three point six feet, uh, to the new proposed building with, which you consider and remember that they were given fifty-one feet before. So they, they were granted more than what this, this award, I mean, what this, uh, variance request would be.
That was fifty-six feet before, just for the record.
Fifty-six feet, okay. The, uh, board appears that if they grant approval, that they would like to have, uh, certain conditions. One, that the concrete bench would be repaired. I guess there's some-
No objection at all.
And, uh, a knock lock box would be installed for, uh, to assist in fire prevention or access by our fire department. The, uh, trash enclosure will be constructed at the rear of the building. There's testimony that there would be two mowouts, but that will be enclosed in a, a structure to the rear of the, of the Med Express facility. Also, they, uh, they conditioned that the drive aisle behind the Med Express building will be one-way in nature and that the African will install a do not enter sign at an appropriate location. Uh, I believe, Brian, is that, uh, they, they've also indicated that they will conform, uh, their plans to certain recommendations made by Brian in his review letter. I believe that is a correct analysis of what we'd be, both entertaining a motion on and nobody want to see.
Mr. Ryan, do you want to do the variances separate from the final site plan?
You can, you can do everything you want once, since they're both variances.
Making sure. I gotta keep David happy. Okay, is there a motion on the floor that we grant final site plan approval for Phase Two of Cedar Properties? Okay, is there a motion on the floor that we grant final site plan approval for page two of Cedar Properties?
I'm going to do it in a second.
Motion is made by Mr. Dickinson, seconded by Mr. Ockley. Do you know we have a poll, please? Yes.
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 Ockley?
Yes.
Did you?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Take care.
Good luck. Nice project.
Take care. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir.
I would like to again comment, uh, the other thing that the applicant, what I did was a twenty percent allowable facade sign. No, how many signs are allowed? I think this is a, this is an application, I think the signs was proper in multiple. I think it really does show that our, our sign, uh, sign board is extremely neat. You could come in here and ask for four hundred square feet of size, and you're looking hard pressed to allow four hundred square feet on that building. And even though, you know, we might want to consider the aggregate, like there were three little signs on the building, I think that, that's not terrible. But, uh, I think that this is something that really has to be on top of, next act, and it comes in, we can then let the billboard on the side of all buildings. I know you were making a comment about twenty percent of mine are closed, probably, around seven.
I agree. The next word of business is the two resolutions that were approved last meeting.
Yes, uh, we have the preliminary approval for Benapal City LLC, that's the sports center, six-ten North Black Horse Pike. This was a preliminary approval and ran of some bulk variances conditioned on final approval. The board recalls, last time, we didn't have, uh, John's review letter in. And we conditioned, and the approvals that we granted, that has to be on the board's review and subsequent hearing on, uh, on those comments. I believe Kenny said they're coming back in in June.
Yes, that's right.
This is preliminary approval and approval for the bulk.
Do you want me to read this in our resolution, Dave?
Um, if the board wants to, I mean, if you want to, it's... If you want me to read it, or if you want to read it, or...
Okay, uh, Benapal City LLC, six-ten North Black Horse Pike, block thirty-eight, lot six, six point oh one, six point oh two, six point oh three, six point oh four, Zone Commercial. The application was recite plan, bulk variances, waivers. Whereas the applicant, Benapal City LLC, is the occupant owner of the lands and premises situated and more commonly known as six oh one North Black Horse Pike, block thirty-eight, lot six, six point oh one, six point oh two, six point oh three, six point oh four, in the Borough of Runnymede. And whereas the applicant has submitted a preliminary final site plan dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, prepared by James Fancy, Fancy and Associates, which sets forth in detail the proposed addition to the existing structure and bulk variances requested. And whereas it is acknowledged by the board and applicant that at the hearing on April tenth, two thousand and thirteen, the planning zoning board engineer had not yet submitted his engineering review letter to the board or the applicant. And whereas it is agreed that the applicant could give testimony regarding the bulk variances and waivers which were requested, together with testimony as to the addition, which is to be constructed and averaged for operation. And whereas the board having advised the applicant that any action taken would be conditioned upon the review of the engineer's review letter to be submitted by the planning zoning board engineer and further conditioned upon the board granting final approval of the applicant's site plan submitted. And whereas there was no objection from the public to the bulk variances requested by the applicant. And whereas the board has determined that the granting of bulk variances and/or waivers requested by the applicant is not detrimental to the public and does not significantly impact the intent of the existing zoning boards. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning zoning board of the Borough of Runnymede as follows. Applicant is granted preliminary approval of the site plan submitted. Condition is subject to the planning zoning board review of the engineer's review letter to be submitted before and discussed at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is submitted to take place on May, in May of two thousand and thirteen. Uh, moving on to the correction to that, they are going to be heard more than likely on June twelfth. The applicant is granted following bulk variances and waivers subject to the conditions here and set forth. The applicant is granted a variance from the side yard setback requirement set forth as section three ninety-five dash nine and three ninety-five dash ten, which require a minimum aggregate side yard setback of thirty feet, with one side being at least ten feet from the line in order to prevent the applicant from constructing proposed addition on lot six point oh three along Sixth Avenue with a five point three deep aggregate, one point one deep side yard and six point five deep total side yard. The applicant is granted a variance from the side yard setback requirement set forth in section three ninety-five dash nine and three ninety-five dash ten, which require a minimum aggregate side yard setback of three feet with one side being at least ten feet from the line in order to prevent the applicant from constructing proposed addition on lot six point oh three along Sixth Avenue with a five point three deep aggregate, one point one deep side yard and six point five deep total side yard. The applicant is granted a variance from section three ninety-five dash nine, which limits the impervious lot covers to fifty percent in order to prevent a total lot coverage of eighty-two percent. The board took note that the current lot cover is eighty-one percent of the lot size. The applicant is granted a variance to allow the existing park to remain closer than twenty feet from the property line of any foot street or public right-of-way and eight feet to any side street or public right-of-way. The board does, the existing parking plan is pre-existing, and the applicant is not extending the same. The applicant is granted a variance from the requirement regarding advertising signs so that the applicant can continue to maintain the existing signs within the existing parking lot. The applicant is granted a waiver from their requirement to provide granted calculations. The bulk variances and waivers are hereby granted upon condition that the planning zoning board reviews the final engineer review letter and upon applicant obtaining final approval, site plan approvals, and any and all other state, county, or municipal approvals which may be required. I have a motion from someone to adopt this resolution. Mr. Ockley? And Mr. Chowski? Roll call you.
Yeah?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Oren?
Yes.
Ockley?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Alvez?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Dean, this resolution adopted? Next resolution?
The next resolution is, the applicant was Gardner Real Estate Company, LLC. This was, uh, premises located at one twenty-sixth South Black Horse Pike and Commercial Zoning District. This was an administrative amendment. Uh, Mr. Reaganese and his client came before this board to significantly lessen the, um, the impact that the previous approval would have made. And, uh, a testimony that the, just economically not feasible to continue with the approval. Do you want me to read this into the record, or did you want to, uh...
You want to have it go, have it go.
Uh, this was, uh, whereas the applicant, Gardner Real Estate Company, LLC, is the owner, record owner of the land and premises situated and more commonly known as one twenty-sixth South Black Horse Pike, lot one oh eight, lots twelve through twelve point oh six in the Borough of Runnymede. The applicant, by resolution adopted February fourth, two thousand and eleven, has previously obtained final site plan approval for the land and premises situated at one twenty-sixth South Black Horse Pike, blocks one oh eight, uh, on twelve through twelve oh six. Whereas the applicant, because of the fiscal estimates to complete the entire project, has approved is not viable. The applicant desired to receive the limited aspect of the approvals which were granted to win to demolish two smaller garages of the site to construct a larger garage, which was previously approved by the board. Whereas the planning zoning board and engineer for the planning zoning board have determined that the request of the applicant does not materially affect the plan approved and are fact de minimis in nature, which do not require formal notice or application and administrative amendment to the plan, have been made without jeopardy or detriment to the public. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning zoning board of the Borough of Runnymede as follows. The applicant is the owner of lands and premises situated at one twenty-sixth Black Horse Pike. The applicant has previously received final site plan approval for the site, February, uh, February fourth, two thousand and eleven. The applicant has granted permission to amend the site plan so that the applicant can demolish these four garages and encourage construction of larger garage at the site in accordance with the plans previously submitted. The applicant has further represented to the board that they abandon all other approvals which were previously granted, which are not directly related to the intended demolition and construction of the improvements here in state. The board further recommends that the governing body for the Borough of, uh, Borough of Runnymede not require the posting any bond regarding the applicant's completion of the improvements to be constructed. I did send a letter to Borough Council on behalf of the applicant making that request.
That was granted. Okay, now a motion on the floor to adopt the resolutions, ready, please? Mr. Ockley and Mr. Chowski, roll call you.
Yeah?
Yes.
Dickinson?
Yes.
Bushian?
Yes.
Chowski?
Yes.
Oren?
Yes.
Ockley?
Yes.
Alvez?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, Dean, this resolution adopted. Okay, uh, we have a gentleman here from Cafe Mondello who would like to, uh, speak informally about, uh, we had some brief discussion, um, last month. The gentleman is wishing to perhaps put some benches or something outside of his pizzeria in the Acme Shopping Center. Uh, would you like, would you have opportunity to about that site?
Yes, I'd like it.
Okay. Um, could I invite, uh, I guess the owner first to testify as to what he'd like to deliver to the basis?
Thanks for having us. I'm in. Basically, what we're looking to do is have outdoor seating.
Name address, sir, please.
I'm sorry, John Greco, one of the owners of Cafe Mondello, six eighty-one, Steve Shamroo. Um, what we're looking to do is have outdoor seating that, you know, to have a lot of customers to be able to enjoy the outdoor, you know, facility further by, by having, um, a limited amount of seats outside just to eat, you know, and, um, I know that, I know that there's, there's some issues with inability for people to walk through. And I think we could show, um, that they want people from walking through. There's plenty of room. The, the concrete won't waste ten feet. We're looking at the tables will take less than four feet. There's, there's almost just five plus.
Five foot right of way.
All right, there's, there's more than that. What we're looking to do is, the property's thirty feet across, um, probably three or four tables across is what we're looking to do.
Do you bring any drawing, direct?
It's crude, if that's what I'm at, it's a, it's a hand, it's a hand-on drawing. I'd be more than glad to show you.
Just so we have a, an idea of, of the, I think, everybody. Does everyone know where, uh, Don's property is? It's a pizzeria, um, which is next to where James stuff used to be in the Acme Shopping Center. Used to be past the others, I believe.
I even took some, that's just past the right.
This is... Sorry?
This is up there by the front.
Yes.
We put a doorstop there that we actually put outside to show how much walkway there is. Even with a large table from inside the restaurant.
Mr. Mike, could you come up and comment on what, uh, you observed when you visited the site, please?
Sure.
Now, that table, that table would be bigger than, than what we would actually put outside. At least it gives, that's a table from inside the restaurant. With four full-size chairs. I mean, the chairs that they put outside would be, you know, like an outdoor aluminum chair. It just gives you an idea of, uh, how much space there is if you put, that's a forty, I think that's a forty-eight inch wide table. And the tables would pull right before it, is what we're thinking, with two chairs on each side.
Are you just thinking of building in, in front of the pizzeria, or does it, has it, is, um, long you jam? Or are you thinking of building something along the corner where?
There's not enough room. There's not enough concrete area to put tables in the side. What we were hoping to do, had a minimum, put them in front. There is a big pump out on the end, uh, that will be room for nicely two tables. And then we would landscape the, they don't really do a great job of landscape on the property. So we would make it nice and landscape the whole entire ring. Put up a divider, you know, we were thinking of putting up this thin concrete divider from the parking lot and the walkway. We'd still be able to walk through, but at least it'll define, it'll define the area. And, um, and even, and even the area of the bump out, we would enclose that. Because no one's walking through that, it's there, so. Uh, but again, come from the, the side parking lot, we're not going to, we're not going to close that hole. We would, they'll be perfect walkway, just like it is now. The only difference is on the, at the turf, you know, at, at the turf area, which we've seen those tables, we'd have seating and, and some decorative, uh, we're thinking concrete planters, just, just a thin concrete planters just to, just to find the area.
Are there, are there parking bollards there now where these four parking spaces are?
It's just, it's just stop. I said, you know what, for, for safety reasons, we would put them. Because I wouldn't want any, any vehicle coming anywhere near the front.
Very close to the seating.
So what we would do is, I'd install them in that particular area because, you know, people, how far people come up with their vehicles, I could dictate that by putting them, so that would be...
And where's this divided one here, John?
Right, right on the curb line.
Right on the curb line, between the tables and the parking?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so this way here, this way here, it's just another shapey fact, a feature for, you know. I think the park, the bollards would be sufficient, but, um, we'll have, they'd be like a secondary. We were hoping to put them and maybe a real thin rail and something, 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 just to make it look nice.
And you want to take them in at night? Are these tables and chairs portable, they're going to go in at night?
We were hoping, we were hoping to be able to, to bolt the tables down so that they don't steal, I mean, and the, and the chairs would bring in at night, so that the kids don't have, have them all over the parking lot.
Yeah, it's kind of tough over there. I, my son, the place moved in about twenty seconds. He was a kid, and I'm just, I don't want to see chairs flying through.
No, 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 they would, they would come in, at our property in Philadelphia. This was on spring garden. Uh, we bolted the tables, you look for the legs, the tables will divide, we bolt. Um, they won't, they won't be able to move. And then the chairs, these extra stack, and then you can bring them in inside every night. And, uh, then it'll look nicer. They don't, I mean, if you dive in, you defend the restaurant, they don't, they don't do anything with the, yeah, twice. They don't, they don't look the right way, so.
What are your thoughts, Mr. Mike?
All right, I guess my first question is, is this an informal, uh, submitting this informally before seeking a variance for the outdoor dining?
Well, I don't know that, I guess what we were trying to find out tonight was whether we even need the variance, per se, um, in the, in the master plan, if there was something. we even need the variance per se in the, in the master plan, if there was something.
Under the, under the zoning code, here's a, it's prohibited for outdoor, any, and I can read it here.
What one of the numbers?
A1B for restaurants. Restaurants where food and drink are prepared, served and consumed within the principal building, said buildings shall be fully enclosed, contain adequate seating for consumption of food sold by said establishment. Nothing contained herein shall be construed as to permit seating facilities outside the enclosed structure for the use of patrons, patrons for said establishment for the consumption of food.
So, Mr. Ryan, what are your standards?
John, do you have liquor here? Do you serve the, do you allow BYO?
Yep.
So you could have people out on the outside, correct?
I mean, we could limit that, if that's, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we don't want to, obviously we want to do this right for the town and that, so.
What's the concern with that here?
Well, it could be liability, even though he's not my licensed establishment, now it's outside of the establishment. The BYO laws are pretty, the state, the alcohol, the provision of alcohol permits. My understanding that they went inside, but you know, that, that would have to be policed if it was outside.
So there was being, it just happened?
People that bring beer in their body sit outside. Yeah, so that, now, our ordinance, as Keith said, our ordinance is clear that we don't, we have prohibition against that for restaurants, that they can't have, but I think we had that come up with the law when we approved that.
Yes.
Although he didn't, we requested, or he withdrew it.
He withdrew it.
Yeah, and then he enclosed the building. So, I mean, you could make an application, but you'd have to show, John, a hardship in order to be successful in getting a use maintenance.
I mean, when honestly, it's, time is of the essence with this. I mean, it's something that would take us into the summer if we pass and then we end up probably doing this in the winter time.
It would definitely go into the summer, by the time, yeah.
That's the problem, I mean, to do something like this, our, what were you envisioning to do with this, was not to really have people eat outside dinners per se, more like gelato and desserts and draw the younger, the younger kids and their family and the families in to be able to, to sit out, have coffee.
Well, what, Keith, would there be, I guess, and this is the first time I saw your rendering was this evening to really get an idea of what you were envisioning. I think what I was envisioning when I spoke to a couple of people about a month ago was, would we be able to just put a couple of benches along the, along the front of the building without having it be the variance, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I think you just have benches.
You just have benches? They can just be for sitting, waiting to get in, waiting to get served. Do you know what I mean? I'm just, I'm trying, I'm trying to find a way to make it work for you within the parameters of what we do allow. And I think, you know, like a number of places, if you go to a restaurant, you know, they will have some type of bench seating for clients to wait until their table is open.
Sure.
Maybe you can make something like that work if they happen to be outside eating ice cream.
So, so no serving outside?
Right.
They just sit outside.
But I think, and I think you're right, Keith, but I think if you put tables out there.
Yeah, no tables.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying, no tables.
So, if I wanted to, if you wanted to do that around, what steps would I have to take?
Just put benches down.
Again, no steps.
Yeah, I'm not upset if we wanted to do, the tables are what we're shooting for, I'm not going to dance around it. I mean, it's, it makes it nicer, it makes it, it makes it a nicer facility. The benches, the benches for me would probably just draw people that, you know, that aren't in the restaurant, just hanging, maybe young kids hanging in front and, you know, nighttime having mischief for people. That would be more of a concern than the tables for me because once we take the seating in at night and during the day we're policing. If there's tables, you know, that, there's always so much they could do, but if I'm creating an area where after hours people can come and hang out, that would concern me, so. I guess my, I guess my thought process is, we need to get to the point where I can put tables or we just pass on, but, you know, if you let me know what steps I need to take and if they're in the timeframe for this year, then great.
What you have to do is you have to finally get an application for a use maintenance, okay? You have to get a list of property on the two hundred feet, you have to publish it in the newspaper. The biggest thing you have to do, though, is to show the board that you have, there's a special reason why you need this.
Why?
They can't vote by law and by statute. The board can't say, hey gee, this is a great restaurant and we think you should have, because then that's appealable by anybody, the public or another, another store owner. So it has to be something unique or by you not having it, you would have a disadvantage or you have hardship. So that's what you have to prove.
Are you representing a corporation? This is a corporation?
No, we're privately owned, and so.
Who owns the, is it an LLC or?
An LLC, two parties.
Then you have to get an attorney because if an LLC or a corporation has to appear before a planning board or a zoning board with the council.
As, as my buddy Dan just did, like I, yeah.
With the use variance, it's best to get a professional planner to give the proof, so positive and negative aspects of that. For an engineering standpoint, you're increasing your seating if you have enough parking in this area for this. You're, you're going to have a larger draw now, so you got to make sure that there's parking, that's added parking for your facility and all the other retail facilities along that strip center, so. And you have to get permission from your landlord.
I have that as a, I have that as a requirement, yeah. But that's the first step we took. We, we had Joe Santos and his assistant and told them our ideas and she says, you've been a positive for this property, we're losing people, I mean, you could say, what's happening to that facility, they're getting rid of the pride, there's more people from budgets, heard from a buddy, the hair cutter may be next, you know, we'll be the last, the last operating facility outside of the tax and then the salon. And if we don't give people a reason to go there, that strip, you know, may, let's talk about hardship, if we lose them and stop drawing people to the store, we'll be no better than the people that were there prior to this. You know, it's every little bit up, you know, in any business. And I, Sam and I, and everything, we know a lot of yous from coming in, we're, we're trying to do is make something nice for the town and obviously a successful business in the process, but you get attached to the town, we got to be honest. You know, my, my father on Runnymede Supply, I know a lot of people here and we like it there, so. We hope to stay, I mean, it's only as good as we can do here, and we're doing good, so I'm happy, not going with the, but we don't know the rights and rules of what Runnymede wants us to do and we'll try to comply. I think June will attest to that, anything she asks me to do, we try to do right, I mean, so we want to, we want to play by the rules, but if it's, if it's going to take us into next year, then we'll back, we'll put it on the back burner and find other things to do, but this would help, you know, I mean, but that property, my concern with the property is, now that I'm invested, is we're losing people, you're losing, if they lose the hair cutter, it's a problem, you know, that's a, they, they draw a lot of people for us and I think we do for them, but, and the landlord, I don't know what his plans are, but I tried to tell him about it, I don't, I don't think he cares no more anyway, but. So, I appreciate your time, you know, we'll do, we'll do whatever you guys ask us to do. I don't think that on the route of, in the attorney and getting all that, the thing going to happen in this, in this timeframe for this year and we'll probably end up being done with it, but I do appreciate you taking the time, what, a couple more time in the for next year, see if it's worth it, but, you know, we may, we may buy next door, I mean, we may, they may take the building next door, they don't keep losing tenants, but it's going to be two things, I told, in most of these, we'll keep investing in Runnymede and make it bigger or we buy another store, so, and another town too, and have two places, but as it sits right now, it's a nice facility, people like it, so, and we keep trying to do as much as we can to make it different and better, but this was something we were hoping for, but it felt too possible, so. I, no, so we'll go back, it's, you know, again, we want to do it right and we're not looking to skip any steps, but I don't think we'll be able to do that, so.
Well, I think coming in, I hope we were at least informative for you.
Yeah.
If you have any questions after this meeting or something, you know, you guys have it, they, they email me and I'll get your questions answered.
All right.
Okay, John?
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. The next matter of business is we would like to make a recommendation, I spoke to Nick Wright regarding the salary increase for June that we had talked about, I guess, before the beginning of the year, so we would like to send the recommendation, please do that through you, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, absolutely.
Please do that for us.
Is that part of the runway?
Yes, we are. Uh, yeah.
I'm just excited.
The recommended, new rate was fifteen hundred, that was recommended by Mr. Wright. That is the same as a deputy clerk, is she, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what he said.
And what's that?
She did fifteen hundred.
For, for the year?
Yeah. Yeah, she just got.
There'd be a stipend of fifteen.
Oh, for a, yeah, I'm just so before the council knows what the recommendation.
Yeah, a lot of this, this board would say that.
Because I was going to say, she, if this girl worked for that for a year, she couldn't be reliable for her.
To increase the stipend of fifteen hundred.
Okay, I don't know what her regulars sound.
Absolutely.
That sounds scary to her. Does anybody on the board not agree with that? Everybody up there with that?
Attending meetings and, attending meetings and things like that.
She decides not to do it, it's, it's, it's. We've always had a separate stipend, I'm not, I'm not prepared, I, it's always been a separate stipend because there were different people who've done this position, so. I think that, you know, June has, you know, it's beneficial for her because she's already in the office and things like that, it makes sense to raise it up. Yeah, to the package, but, you know, if everything, everybody's happy with this, I think, Runnymede can resolve right away. We're about to ratify next Tuesday, the contract.
That you saved, Mike?
Okay, Mike, you know, I, I just tried.
Do you have that money to budget now?
What's that?
Do you have that money to budget?
We're taking that, you're like.
Fantastic.
There's other time, there's other.
When do you need that underwriting?
You know, if, if you could have me, and I hate to say this, we had, you know, you know, people that send over, the only thing I'm saying tonight is that the mayor said that we could ease it or solve that.
That too.
Okay, facts are over, facts are the choice.
That's it.
Facts are the choice?
Yes. And we'll put on the agenda for Tuesday.
Thank you. Majesty's night. Thank you, and June very much deserved it. Very good job.
No, I don't want to see her in that without.
Oh, yeah. All right. The next thing, we have two, well, we have one report progress right now for the signing of subcommittee, I'm going to defer to Mr. Dickinson for the, what we're calling renewable energy.
Myself and Mr. Compaugh and Mr. Offaly, we met last Wednesday, and I was told that I went and had a lot of time to go through this new simple lean use, and every time you make reference to solar or wind, I try to find it into book, and everything that our engineer recommended to us is covered perpetually in this recommendation from the our engineer. So at this point, I would like to submit this to be taken up by Mayor Council, ordinance, and put this in the O M A N, because definitely a beneficial use and a beneficial use. And there's only one thing I found that, one discrepancy that I could recommend or that I could mention is that whoever comes in, because in here talks about wind turbines, eighty, eighty foot high, we have fifty foot high torque in the power run needs, so they'll need a variance for every one of them. But everything that we, that I think is advisable to the power run needs, it's covered in the new simple lean use all, and this is a verbiage copy, submit this to Nick.
Does everybody have a copy of this? Anybody?
No, I don't.
Anybody want to get a copy of this? Or are we satisfied?
No, I don't want to get a copy of it.
And this was, this was given to us a few months ago from Mr. Bob, and so he came in and spoke briefly on it. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to get some standards in place, is, I mean, I'm comfortable with sending it up to the mayor and council because I've been through it a bit and Mr. Bob, obviously, as we know for a living, and.
Roll my copy.
And is there anybody?
I'm going to need to. I'm not caring. You comp this out of the vote, did you?
I, I think this, this is a, a, yeah, I mean, it's very good, it covers all bases. The committee, we went over it, and I mean, I know the board, they like it, I think it's always great.
The only question I have was about infer this copy.
I like, if we can wake them up and then just send it up to council next week, if the committee recommended it, I think we can rest it.
Hey, good question. Who does not have a copy?
County, county's handling.
Yes, sir.
Seeing to be a number of people that might have a copy.
Yes.
To judge and send everybody.
Yes, and all.
People, I don't know what you do with your own.
Who, who's president?
I've given that at least twice. I said, I've given that at least twice, you people.
I remember.
What you, what would just transpire here, John said he went through it personally, okay? Now, we got to know what he went through personally. You never made a statement that this is the one that you had before.
Well, I never would say that.
You want, there were, was this enough hands? Well, I've said.
It's not a rush to do this.
No, no, so it's just, this, this, your boy has a copy.
Revisit it next month.
Revisit it next month.
Now, I'm looking for a resolution. Okay, we can just tell a resolution, then you review it, just discuss, then resolution recommendation to the Borough of Runnymede cancel to adopt. And incorporate it into our.
Jim, would you please see to it that everyone gets copies and would you please put them on the June 12th agenda? Thank you.
Keith, can you get a copy of it?
I'll die.
She found her own work. And the next thing I'd like to discuss, we're almost done, I promise, Deborah had some discussion with Kathy Coliberry and Mr. Ryan, I sent you the sustainable journey man use pledge that they're trying to get the points, I sent it over to you at the end of April, two attachments.
Oh, okay, you get it, we have to go online?
Well, I was asking you if we needed to take any action.
Let me see what's that, what?
And while you're looking at this, Debbie, do you want to give us a brief synopsis for what Kathy spoke of, to meet you tonight?
Sure. Basically, what's going on, she is involved with the state sustainability program, green buildings and whatnot, it's a, it's a very involved project where the township, if you pass the criteria for this, you're eligible for quite a bit of grant money, state, and maybe eventually federal as well. But what they did is they have a list of different things that they have to meet before they're given the green label and is considered certified. Part of it is that they want to involve the planning committee in regards to the next time they go through our master plan. But we can also make recommendations at any time to the council, so that what the Kathy was asking is whether or not we can put something, set something up to council at this point, trying to get it in before next council meeting because she is, the clock's ticking on this, they only have, I think, until the middle of June to get this passed through. I think, Nick, you already know about this.
I do.
So, what I had been going through was some of the information that she gave me. It's not that it's a, most of these things are all listed, they request that we get people together to discuss maybe in. Uh, it's not that it's a, uh, most of these things are all listed, uh, they, uh, request that we, uh, get people together to discuss maybe an arts, uh, project. Uh, look at the next master plan, and anything, uh, that is already, uh, under our ordinances. You know, to review this and see whether or not if we have to, uh, do any kind of amending to any of the township buildings that we consider green technology. Uh, nothing is, uh, that I saw, uh, was mandatory. In other words, you don't have to, uh, actually meet, uh, any of these requirements in order to be certified as a, a sustainable community. Uh, a lot of the stuff, uh, structured parking alternatives were appropriate, uh, natural, uh, resources inventory went feasible. So what they're doing is we're giving each of the townships guidelines on how to, uh, develop and implement maybe a plan that, uh, looks at our resources as a whole, uh, does stuff to promote, uh, community awareness. They have a garden now in front of the library that, uh, anybody can go, uh, in the township, and, uh, if they wanna, uh, take a few clocks there, they can grow some vegetables. It's all stuff that the state had set up, uh, to get communities in New Jersey thinking about the long term rather than the short term. Uh, so what she, and asked me today, and I know she spoke with Nick and Candy, uh, to see if we can't send the recommendations up to council. Now, the only problem being, uh, I'm sure nobody has seen all this yet, uh, but, as I said, I looked through what I had here, and there's nothing, uh, that's like a, uh, etched in stone. In other words, I'm not saying that we actually have to do a certain number of things to qualify. These are just, they would like us to recommend things to council, they'd like council to consider things. They'd like us to, you know, uh, maybe for communities to look at different, uh, options. Uh, part of it was reviewing our renewable energy thing, the thing that we just discussed before about the solar and whatnot. Uh, so, you know, in order for her to meet this burden of proof, uh, she just has to, uh, certify that she gave before us, and that we send some recommendations, uh, to council. So what I've seen, uh, it looks like it's fine, if we go and bump it back to council, this way they would make that, uh, criteria by year next week.
Are you familiar, has this, this, uh, your notes that Mr. Dickinson was talking about, we should change? Was that one of this changeable, uh, that had to be done?
Yeah, that we actually.
The deadline is, is June sixteenth.
Exactly.
And council needs, uh, June fifth.
So.
And so there's only, the, the council wants to act, there is a point system, and for, like, starting to read it, you get so many points. And once you get to one hundred and fifty points, you would, you would, you would achieve a bond, well, you're aware of all this, you would this. And, uh, you know, the county is, is pushing this, the state of New Jersey is pushing this, that the community start looking at it. The action that I, I, I went online and started reading some of this, uh, the past few days, because I did get, I did get a phone call from, uh, Jeffrey Nash's office, and sustainability.
She mentioned that, yeah, Jeffrey Nash.
And they're really pushing that, that all the communities look at this. And when we started looking at it, the, the suspicion says it's all just suggestions. For example, uh, we would pass a resolution that says that the, uh, the borough must consider, uh, you know, every time the development comes in, that we wanna make sure there's, there's parking and other means of, of, uh, transportation, things like that. But it's only suggestions, it's for this board, not to necessarily implement every time, but we're talking and thinking about things. That's, that, that's what it came to be. When this first came to our solicitor, uh, Mr. Wood, he kinda pushed back on it, because at first, I think he, he read it, it was, uh, once again, putting us in a corner where we would have to start implementing stuff. But that's not exactly what, what, it's more of a suggestion, is that correct?
Great, yeah, it, it would be just the board member to ask him, yeah, do you have any intentions on being green?
Well, I'd be with the knockbox, like.
Right, right.
Exactly.
Like, we would say to them, would you put solar panels on your roof? You're building this brand new building, you're building seven thousand square feet, would you put solar panels? I'm not, no, that was the exact scenario.
And that's basically it, and, uh, and there's, there's, uh, several items there that she's already, uh, checked off. So, uh, you know, they've, uh, they've got the garden starting, a lot of it is, uh, involved with the schools as well, they have, uh.
Education.
This butterfly garden, and, uh, I know, uh, down the school, there's been involved with that. So, uh, a lot of it is just, let's involve everybody, you know, the school, uh, you know, fire and police. And they also mentioned, uh, uh, buildings that were related to the municipality, like the, uh, what they're gonna be putting down between acres. Uh, you know, just to make sure that what we do, it's not gonna harm the environment, I guess, but there's no, uh, you know, there's no, uh, written law on this that we have to do things a certain way.
It's just resolution.
They want us to consider it, and that, and, uh, you know, keep that foremost, uh, when we're going through our next, uh, review of the master plan, uh, to make sure that we, uh, consider all these, uh, impact on the environment.
And I tell you.
So I saw nothing objectionable in it, I know, uh, Mr. Rowan, I guess you got a copy of that as well, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
The only reason why, uh, you know, they're, uh, under the gun on this is because of the time limitation, if, if we don't.
Totally purely, uh, only, only at one time a year.
Right, and if you don't.
Do we need a letter to borough council, if they, they adopt the sustainable energy pledge at the?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're caught, once again, the board hasn't had an opportunity to read all this stuff, and, you know, how do they make a recommendation without reading it? But on the same token, I, I understand that this deadline is sixteenth. The, uh, the change to the ordinance that Mr. Dickinson said, well, this gave us points, this board might wanna consider this tonight, you know, I agree, we should read it, but maybe we can read it real quickly and, and out loud.
Well, I think.
Because if we can do it, council could actually adopt.
I, I think, like Debbie was saying, like Mr. Rowan was saying, um, this is, this is almost an information-only letter of, of how to, it's a vehicle to do things.
Right.
It's not, it's not dictating that you have to do it, it's just a vehicle of how you can do it. If you wanna do it, if it is feasible in your particular municipality, then, you know, would you consider?
Now, but you're gonna get a group or a grievance, or a thing.
Exactly.
You know, things, which is a lot of things, and, uh, she said that you can't do it, so.
But all, all she asks us to do is, uh.
If we could develop, if we could develop a series of questions, that we ask every applicant.
Yeah, granted, that's one of the things, and we would be complying.
Absolutely.
But all she, all she.
I was just like, you ask for that one.
Of course, it's crazy.
All she needed from us is to, uh.
Right.
Right, you could put on the application, right, you intend to use solar power, you know, or do you?
That's gotta be worth some points, Deb, if we, if we put it on our application, did we give them a list of green questions they have to answer?
Well, all of this is, is intending on approval from council. All she asks of us is for us to put our, uh, informator, you know, on the, what we have so far, and move it to council with a recommendation that they consider this. That's all are involved in the bid. Anything we do tonight is not gonna, uh, change any of our codes, or have any impact on anything really to the township, just, uh, to pass along with our recommendation. And the only reason why they're hurrying on this is, like I said, well, we won't, we won't wait until after, it's too late for, uh, council to, uh, review this, and, uh, you know, make their, uh, decisions on that one.
Well, I, I make the notion that we, uh, ask Mr. Ryan to sign a recommendation to mayor and council.
Okay, we don't have to go by resolution before you have it all, but we can do a letter of letter to council, um, um, that, you know, it's been reviewed and discussed, and we recommend that, uh, the borough become compliant, or adopt the sustainable energy pledge and green building policies.
Does anyone have an objection to that?
It's like, it's like the dare thing.
No, uh, you, you know, you make the pledge, you know, I mean, this is, this is that type of.
Well, the mayor just said we have a caucus in the middle of.
I've got it over the board. Is that okay? I'll fax it over.
Okay, so, uh, so that's basically it.
The last, uh, the last Tuesday of the month is our caucus, so if we can put on the agenda.
I'll, 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 I'll fax it over to you tomorrow.
Yeah. And then we can discuss it, and then we could, we, if, if it works, on June fifth, we could adopt the, they're only resolutions, so it's not ordinance that we have to read twice.
Exactly, that's why.
Now, Mr. Dickinson said that we had to change the ordinance, and I don't know if I got this points.
He was just gonna say that it's our recommendation, they're not that.
We wouldn't be changing any of it, so all we're gonna be doing is saying that we would like, uh, council to consider this, and, uh.
What, 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 what happened? Now, that's, that's why.
Yeah, that, you know, it, it, let me just write down, I, I know I have to, but I.
I hear you, I'll clear you.
Yeah, I remember, this is written off, just let me write down, it's sustainable. I'd like to say it's, it's, it's membership.
Uh, I have a copy of a year of, I have a year of, it's a lot.
And it's your show, and it's a green building, we go.
Yeah, there were two, uh, two resolutions, and.
How many do you want your ones out of?
Okay, that's, that's absolutely.
Thank you, David.
She was gonna run them off, but I thought we're not really gonna have time to.
Would you have for next week? Would you have for next week?
We could, but she needs us to.
We're doing, we're doing, okay, okay.
So, yeah. I wanted ten copies, and I said, I wanna go.
We'll already have it, before your next meeting, then, then council after the group, Mr. Dickinson just wants to have a copy.
Uh, we also, you can go on the website, so if you don't feel like, you know.
We don't, that is a hard talk, but, you know, what you can do, um, if, that, who, who would like, Lou? Who would like a copy of this?
I would have to read it.
Okay.
It's online, you know.
I know. Deb, would you, could you get some copies for us?
How many do you think that you guys?
Scott, do you want one?
Yeah.
Alright, all the, all the member copies.
Well, we're gonna send the recommendation up anyway.
Sending it up for their education purposes, so they can read it at their leisure.
Right.
Like they're saying, board member have a copy of this, so they can, you know, go through it and have the opportunity to make comments on it next, next call.
She offered to do ten copies, so you want me to just have to do ten copies, and then?
And we can distribute them to the members?
Uh, next one's me. Okay, are you ready to go with that? And as I said, I have, when I know Nikki, to look at it, uh, there's nothing in here that's gonna change any of our programs.
No.
It's a, a recommendation for us to review this, and, and to consider some of these things, you know.
Would you need a copy to, that was, please?
Uh, okay, so how many is in all together, is, is ten enough for her, or?
Yeah, I think, I think ten's fine.
All right, I'll probably have to order it.
Thanks.
Thank you, yes.
Uh, we had communication from Fed associates, um, regarding Sports Depot that was, uh, given to us since the last meeting. Did everyone get that, the review letter?
You might, yeah, I got it, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
I'll forward it tomorrow.
Just so you know, the review letter.
Okay.
Went out. For, uh.
I, I had issues with my email list, so.
Sports, Sports Depot, so everyone, should have received that, if you didn't, uh, contact Mr. Fed's office, because that's gonna probably be the third, uh, on the June twelve agenda, okay? Sports Depot. Jim, what do we do with this?
That was just the thing from the solar thing that they were proposing for the school. We really can't act on it, we don't have it.
Okay, this is, this is a communication that we received from Garrison Architects, uh, it's regarding, uh, the letter, that the Board of Education is seeking the Jersey Department of Education approval. Uh, it actually says, New Jersey Department of Education approval to construct a solar energy project utilizing power purchase agreement, sponsored by the township's local officer in accordance with NJA-CTA twenty-six dash seven one one, seven point two. Uh, this is Triton High School's solar energy program. So I guess, who will. It doesn't, it's. I don't know if it's, I just received this tonight. It is going on roof, and they're proposing to go on roof.
Oh, the Board of Education built it, in Los Angeles?
The Triton High School, that is coming from the Board of Education.
Okay, so it's on Triton.
Their offices on the, uh, on the.
Well, um, again, I don't think we can make any formal recommendations on this, we don't have any things.
Typically, when there's a public improvement, certainly when there's a public improvement, those entities just pour it on, or they do sport as courtesy.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, there's no typical approval that we have to do, but it's just.
I guess we'll receive, I don't know, only receive the file this day, Jim, receive the file, and then we'll have it, or. Just, sir. Sir.
I'm, I'm listening to what the gentleman said, and I agree with him, but I still think that our professionals will have a copy of that, just so that they.
Sure, I'm gonna take this with you, and then just get it back.
I actually do, uh, that was emailed to me, and I have. If I could have a copy for you.
Take it with you, and then just bring it back next month, if that's okay with you.
Jim will have that, he will.
He's gonna bring it back.
Well, you know, would you, is that gonna be in the office, Jim, or maybe just pick it up?
Yeah, we'll share with you.
I can email it out.
Consider it done.
I'll be going to the bar, but I don't say it.
What's that? That was dressed in plenty, we're, Jim, this doesn't have it, so. Oh, but, Jim, I'll put one in our. Okay, that'll work. All right, anybody else have any open business to discuss?
I'd have to discuss a little bit, but this is.
Yes, sir.
Since it was brought up this evening, that, uh, the current one is thirty-nine-five dash nine-eight-one D, uh, does not allow for outdoor dining. Now, you know, does this planning board, I know it's another project, does this, remember, one of the businesses, is it something?
You didn't wanna do it?
Uh, like, the whole thing started from what I remember, uh, because of problems that occurred when that was announced. But it was a while ago, but it was a trash issue and whatnot, and I didn't.
Well, that was, it was, not a burger thing, but a burger place.
Something on the fight with yourself.
I remember when kids were smaller.
Yeah.
Well, by the time we didn't have code enforcement, now we have heat.
I'm, uh.
And he writes his own.
I, uh, it's actually.
What?
It's actually, um, something that, that was recommended in our master plan, that just got adopted, that we, that we do revisit that, they recommended. I have that copy with me.
Well, the master plan, it wasn't adopted, it was, it was a recommendation from the.
Correct.
But I don't think it was, nothing was adopted by council.
It's recommended that restaurants that do not include a drive-in or a drive-through window, also permitted in the commercial setting district, use our restaurants, such as pizza shops, coffee shops, salad bars, and Baja Fresh, for example, that provide quick service. And it goes on to say, um, outdoor dining areas. It's recommended that the ordinance, uh, be revised to permit outdoor dining in the commercial district, where outdoor seating is accessory to the principal restaurant use, and when tables are provided in a location shown on a site plan and approved by the planning board, outdoor dining areas should include trash receptacles. And if adjacent to a parking lot, the area should be separated from the parking area by decorative wall or bottles, like we spoke about this evening, as well as landscaping, talked about that this evening, um, to protect the air, protect the area. Outdoor dining areas adjacent to the residential use should be required to be closed by eleven P M. It goes on to speak about sidewalk cafe, tables and chairs, may not be on public property, or in the right way. So it goes on to say that we should revisit that, um.
Is this something like, I mean, the way the engineer, uh, produced a, a typical ordinance, that Mr. Dickinson, for us all to view, that is a great jumping off point, uh, you know, we could make some changes, like you said, about the fifty-foot height and things like that. That's probably not the, uh, start.
Start from scratch, yeah.
But at the same time, I don't think anybody would care to, I would not have thought about those, uh, landscape buffers, the wall, and, and if we had those kind of standards, I think the question in the past is if there wasn't standard, uh, if, if there wasn't trash receptacles, if there wasn't, uh, a separation, and things like that. And those are the bigger issues that I think this board had to face.
I would like to revisit it, only, I mean, I just think it's, uh, something that's really become prevalent in, in all areas. If you go to Hatfield, if you go to Oakland, if you go to Hatlakes, anywhere, they all, they all have. I mean, even the new restaurants that are going up.
Yeah.
They also have that. And in fact, the matter is, um, if we look at the corner of the Mr.'s road, there's four fifty tables allocated, uh, of pizza area right now.
What I would recommend is if the, if the borough is going to do that, instead of making it a specific permitted use, make it a conditional permitted use. So every time somebody would wanna propose that, they'd have to come.
That's what it sounded like, the, uh.
And we could put conditions, we could put conditions on it.
Right.
Because we don't want it on a five-foot sidewalk, obviously, so, you know, we.
That's what it sounded like, that, right?
Yeah, yeah, like additional, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
But conditional.
So bring it back to this board.
The board will always have.
It's allowed, and they have to get the approvals from you.
And that would make the approval a lot easier, if I don't, if I was here earlier.
I'm sorry, uh, there's one meeting, I'm sorry, Brian, would you be there?
Well, I was just saying that it would make the approval easier for the gentleman that was here just earlier.
going to beg for forgiveness. That gentleman came in here, he, and he was, whatever we called to do, he was willing to do the bollards, landscaping. I respect that, to somebody who comes in and asks to do things the right way.
But I think we have to be a little bit cautious about what this gentleman proposed. You're one step off from a parking lot, you're going to put.
I think that's why the idea, if it was brought to this board, the engineer was given an opportunity to look at that site plan and, and put those restrictions on there. Or anything worse.
Well, I think what we're going to have to do is just step back. There's a fence. Let's find out. The reason why the fence was erected before we would tear it down.
No, it was.
What was that talking about? Yeah, another part of that. Why is there a? He's talking about, you know, the. Making it active, has objections.
Why are your objections?
Well, in the source of our document, for the official, the 40-year rule.
Correct.
Could you repeat that one?
What, the 40-year rule?
Yes.
The 40-year rule basically exists, and we've been doing it for 40 years, we can do it for another 40. So instead of, you know, making corrections, times change, people change, everything changes. You, you need to revisit some things.
I think we revisit it, and guess what? We can always say no. We should always say no, and we can always get somebody back in and say, this isn't working.
I think those objections never reach to a site proposal such as what this gentleman proposed this evening was, they were always next to homes. Right? They were always next to homes where they wanted people outside eating and stuff like that, where they had to put up with all the noise.
Right.
Has to be lighting out there, if they want to do it, and these kinds of stuff.
I think this is why the site plan and this board would have the ability to protect.
I don't know how, how we would have done it with the board and given whether or not we give it permission, but this figure's had it, is because he's an L. O. City.
Well.
He needs to be represented by a attorney, all right?
Yeah.
And he also has, there's other things.
Well, yeah, he would have to submit.
So that's why I think the problem is, you can't get that.
He can do that to me. I don't know why he couldn't get.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know if he could show special reason.
No, he wouldn't have to, he wouldn't have to, if we, if we decide.
Absolutely. If we have a conditional permitted use, or additional use, then he comes in and we can put conditions, hey, you know what, you're only going to have two tables.
Correct.
You can't have more.
Is this originated from the planning board, or originated from council?
From county, it can be a recommendation. Council can deal with it themselves, but now if, if the planning board wants to buy a letter, again, recommendation, propose that to council, hey, we're, we think our joint board should be amended to.
This board had more experience than this.
Yeah, you don't need, you don't need a token, though, you can just, council can just go and do it.
That's why, I mean, there was a template of additional permitted use ordinance that this board could look at first and then recommend to council. That would really have been possible. And this board would have to say, this, you know, this would have to say before the ordinance went up.
Once the ordinance goes, it's separate, the council sends it.
Sends it back anyway.